All right, welcome everybody. Let's go ahead and get started with our work session here on September 21st. Is there a motion to accept or modify the agenda this evening?
Yes, I move that the agenda be accepted as presented.
We were going to have a tension item, or a work session item. No internet.
I'll second.
Can I rescind my motion? Okay. Ms. Salmons, are you aware of the addition of the work session item?
No.
Okay, wait a minute.
Oh, for yesterday.
Yeah, it's for...
It's not on there, but...
I'd like to modify the agenda to allow for the addition of the work session item to talk about adding a finance assistant for Mr. Valentine.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Great.
Onto the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the action agenda. And we're going to be skipping the removed items A, B, and C. And moving on to the lease agreement for Raymond St. Myers Youth Center for elements. Is there anyone that would like to speak on public comment regarding this item?
And I've spoken to the board and update. Our, the attorney said that they spoke with the county attorney's office earlier today and that they were not going to be able to really do something until tomorrow. But with the way that they suggested that we make the motion for approval, that really, there's not going to be a lot of substantial changes in that agreement. And it's going to kind of move more towards an MOU, but there will be some slight. But it's basically similar to what you have with a few changes that they have recommended. So, but the attorney did advise that we are good to, for you guys to approve with everything.
Are there any questions?
Do we want to, like, present what it is?
It's nothing...
You can talk about what we use the element, what elements program is.
The elements program is a program similar to a program at Montgomery County Community College in Maryland. We visited that a few years ago. The Special Education Advisory Committee looked at a variety of options to support adults 18 to 22 in a community-based setting. We've seen a lot of peers in the past, brothers, sisters of students with disabilities who go off to Lord Fairfax or go off to college. And, you know, there wasn't, some students with disabilities didn't have that option, particularly with significant cognitive impairments. So, we decided to work with Lord Fairfax Community College and create our own program named Elements. And we've been at Lord Fairfax Community College for years until March of 2020 when we had to stop. Our plan is to go back with an expanded program at Lord Fairfax. But in the meantime, we wanted a community-based program that will support students with disabilities in the community, teaching them supported and competitive employment opportunities. And the county stepped forward, stepped up, and offered the use of Sam Myers Youth Center to homebase our program. And our students now, and it's about nine students this year, actually go into the community, work with the town, work with all kinds of business partners in Front Royal, and learn how to work competitively. And that's what the program is. We have a teacher and job coaches at the program that teaches our young adults job skills. And that's what it is. And they offered us this building for free. And so, we've been working there for a few years. And what we're finding, when Lord Fairfax opens its doors, hopefully in the spring is when our plan is, is to have two bases. One, that's working in the mailroom, working at Subway, working at the Student Union or the hub, whatever it's called over there at Lord Fairfax in the far building. And at the same time, having people work in our community with the town and with the community. That's it. And we love it, and we're very thankful to the county for stepping up and providing this resource for us free of cost.
So, are you thinking that it, when you said you are planning for it to be back at, what is now Laurel Ridge still? Is it...
Our plans, our plans.
Okay, okay.
We want to expand the pie. We want, we want to expand our students because we have, we have a lot more students that could benefit from this support than the nine students that we're currently serving. And we want to give students options that don't graduate with a standard or an advanced diploma. We want to give them the option to stay until their 22nd birthday so we can support them in a variety of matters. And this is one way. There's nothing, you know, we don't like to see students sitting at Warren County or Skyline High School for eight years in a restrictive setting. So, we're creating options in the community and at the college.
Any additional questions from Mr. Hirsch? Is there a motion?
I recommend that the board's action authorize the superintendent to execute a lease or memorandum of agreement with the county of Warren for the occupancy of a portion of the St. Myers Youth Center located at 200 East 8th Street in Front Royal, Virginia, on terms substantially similar to the attached lease agreement.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Great, thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Next up, we have Schoology Elementary Learning Management System. Is there anyone that would like to speak on public comment on this item? Ms. Bragg?
We would like to put forth in front of the board the renewal of our Schoology Learning Management System contract. Schoology is a learning management system that our elementary school uses for grades K through five. We have been working with Schoology to offer that service over the past two school years. It provides teachers, students, and parents an online platform for communication, and it's also how our teachers share out course materials when students are absent, and of course, what we use during virtual learning during COVID. The one-year contract extends the elementary school's access to Schoology through this school year, and that is in the amount of $16,147.15.
Are there any questions for Ms. Bragg on this? And this money is already in education?
It would be made for out of the instruction budget.
Is there a motion?
I move that Warren County Public Schools approve the purchase of the Schoology Learning Management System in the amount of $16,147.15 for use in elementary schools for the 2022-2023 school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Can I still ask, can I ask your question? Is this an option for the, all the teachers to use, or is it part of their requirements to use as their...
It has been a requirement, of course, throughout the last two school years where we had COVID and students out for long extended periods of time for COVID leave and that sort of thing. This year, teachers do have an online account, but it is used at some variability, obviously more with like fourth and fifth grade students who are a little bit more independent with online learning and that sort of thing than perhaps kindergarten or something like that. But all teachers have an account, and all teachers can use it to communicate with students, parents, and post-materials. But yes, the usage is heavier at like fourth and fifth grade. Does that answer...
It does, it does.
What's the breakdown as far as like, do we, percentage of teachers that are, over half are choosing to use it, or is it...
I don't, I don't have the breakdown information with me. We did a survey at the end of last school year to determine how much teachers were using it, who wanted to have it for another school year, that sort of thing. And the results of those surveys led us to go ahead and purchase for one more year. You know, I do think we'll be running that survey again, probably in like the November timeframe, so that we can prepare for next school year as well. So, like I say, the results of the end of last year led us to purchase one more year. I also think we are in a three-year contract, and this is the last year of that contract term.
Any other discussion? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Ms. Bragg.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Skyline High School additional handicap accessible curb cuts. Is there any public comment on this? Is Mr. Hirsch...
We'll work together. We work together a lot. Thank you. I'm gonna, we're gonna work together on this. And Warren County Public Schools staff is requesting to install additional curb cuts at Skyline High School. Should be two additional documents that you have here. There's a state or a contract quote, as well as a visual of what we will be referring to. The purpose of this project will increase student and staff safety and improve accessibility for all our students. The ideal location to be installed accessible curb cuts at the bus loop parking lot entrance where a painted pedestrian crosswalk currently exists. The location provides better visibility or line of sight for any pedestrian traffic. The proposal for this is from the Guardian Group, which has a state-approved contract in the amount of $19,235.83 to install the cuts, the curb cuts. The funding for this would come really from two sources, mainly the maintenance funding, maintenance funding budget. And then, the second part I'd like for Mr. Hirsch to speak because he was, he was the spearhead here in being able to help us to get some additional funding for this project.
As Warren County Public Schools was exploring different ways to make, make the parking lot even more accessible, the Ark of Warren, in conjunction with Access Independence, has been working on the same project at the same time. So, as Warren County Schools was doing this, and I was at a meeting, and I heard Buck mention it, I was like, oh, that's coincidental. We're looking at some of those same kinds of options as well. So, the Ark of Warren pledged $2,500 to the project, and Access Independence pledged another $2,500 to the project to help, to create a partnership with Warren County Schools to make the community more accessible for students with mobility needs. And we're excited about the community partnership. We work with Access Independence all the time, and the Ark of Warren, of course, is a real community partner to the school system. And we're all just happy to work together and be part of this success.
The current cuts that we have on that, the closest, really would take you back through the community entrance coming out of the building, that we go directly across the parking lot, down to the roadway, which would lead to the lower entrance to the football field. We pass the softball stadium, and we pass the tennis courts and those type of things. So, even for those students, and I spent two afternoons over at the school just observing what happens in the evening when traffic is moving through that area, our band members and so forth, anyone that has to have an instrument that you actually have like in a wagon that you're pulling that down, they have to come down to that cut area, then cut across that lot, to then cut across the sidewalk to go out to the stadium park area where they would be practicing. Most of the time after school, that our students are parked out toward the stadium area. So, all of us who've had after-school activities, we try to go move our car and park it as close as we can to where we're going to leave the locker room that evening. That's also at the same place where all this traffic is going and those type of things. And that area does not have a crosswalk marked down through the parking area, and that there are blind spots in that area. Once track, once cars start to move into that area, that when you come through there, there are blind spots there. On that very front end where the crosswalk is at, what we're referencing to, where we would put these curb cuts, the visibility is much greater, both for those who are crossing and those who are entering and those who are exiting. And I was just over there last night, and there was a volleyball game, and the band was, you know, students were coming down from the parking lot up there by the football field. They were pushing their carts. Some students were bouncing their carts over the curb and using the crosswalk, but some of them that had, as far as their carts were a little larger, they had to go on down and come across. And you already had people that were there for that game, and so you had cars parked in all these parking spots. And so, it allowed me to see firsthand that here's this young lady pushing this cart out, and, you know, I'm stopping because it's dangerous because she's having to go between cars and between parked cars to get to the other side. So, this will allow us to, for our students to be seen and not have to go through parked vehicles to get to the other side.
That would say you're actually having to walk through parking spots?
That's correct. If you're using the cutouts in that picture, that second pit at Ariel, yeah, if you go to where the lines show you would go across where the cutouts are, you're walking through at least a few rows of parked vehicles. What's... At a football, in the football game and those type of things in the evening time, it becomes very difficult, yes. And most of the time, honestly, even as a young person, if I'm leaving one lot to hurry up to pull in, I'm not necessarily visualizing someone walking out from behind a car or a truck or those type of things. We've talked about, we spoke of actually putting a possibly a crosswalk, like paint a crosswalk through there. We would lose a few spaces of parking. That really wouldn't be so much of an issue, but it's still, even with that, it's still a danger of people, they're excited when they come to these things, and they're either happy or not very happy when they leave these things. So, they're not really paying attention too much to someone who's behind that car, and then they walk out, especially if someone's pulling a cart and those type of things, and you're debating with the cart to come with you while at the same time, you're trying to pay attention to someone who's not seeing you.
These red dots on the picture, is that what was the intended pathway when the school was built and all this was designed? The red dots that go all the way around the long way?
That would be, yes, that would be where the, if I'm, if I'm correct, that would be where the cuts would be, and you, you would go...
The red dots make the big loop.
That's no cuts at all, that's just like you're on the sidewalk.
I think they were just showing that. Here's, here's three ways that students can get to the upper parking lot. One is the red dots, which loop you all the way around. The blue line cuts you across the parking lot where there's already existing cuts. And then, the green line is where we have a crosswalk, but we do not have any curb cuts. And that's why it was suggested that we put the curb cuts at that crosswalk.
Is that crosswalk like after the back though? I'm just trying to like figure out why you just put the ramps there where the crosswalk is in the first place. Okay.
In your mind, can you answer that? Can you answer that question?
I think this is what this is like.
Are there any other questions?
So, you said $5,000 was needed, donated...
So, the 19, 19 and whatever, the $20,000 might, would minus 5,000.
So, can you get the increases, the appropriation rate?
No, we're gonna use that. It's, I mean, you know, we're gonna look at our maintenance, it'll come out of maintenance, but this will help soften the blow to maintenance.
Yeah, I appreciate your work we've done to find that funding for us. Is there a motion on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that, I move that approval be given to award a contract to the Guardian Group in the amount of $19,235.83 to install accessible curb cuts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Mr. Hirsch.
That would just... Yeah, I mean, because when you, you know, I wonder if there'd be a way for them just to pay that portion of that deal or... We'll have to see, maybe they want to make that payment. Let me work through that and see, see if we can make that happen.
All right, moving on to our work session. The first item is going to be discussion on donating surplus vehicles. That's Dr. Valentine.
And this is just an idea, you know, just to discuss with the board, get your feedback. You know, we do have a policy that talks about disposal of surplus vehicles and that, and equipment. So, and within this policy, we have, you know, if you have some vehicles, like right now, we have about five or six Suburbans that we are cycling out. And, you know, we've also had in the past classroom supplies or Chromebooks that we have to cycle out. So, you know, at times, as a school division, we're always cycling things out. And so, in looking and thinking of, you know, how can we continue to support some of our families? And the thought was, we were having a discussion about our McKinney-Vento families, those are homeless families, and, you know, we do give a lot of support for them. And, you know, the idea was, well, what if somebody didn't have transportation? What, you know, we were talking transportation, things of that nature. But in working through this and going, I want to go over the, basically the policy with you as far as, you know, one, we, sometimes we trade them in. And then, visiting with Aaron, he said, trade-in, when I take a vehicle in, he said, I may get 500, I may get $1,000 for trade-in on a vehicle. He said, no, that's what he's gotten in the past. If you also look at that second paragraph, it says that as a division, you may dispose of the equipment having no trade-in value by informal bid, auction, or pre-price sale as appropriate to the public. So, as a board, when it's time, these, we're not asking for these to be surplus yet. So, as we work through this, and as a board, you can decide, okay, we want to, we want to surplus these items, we want to put them out for sealed bids, and then people can bid on those. And so, the items are valued, if they're valued in excess of $500 formal authorization for negotiated sale or putting items to bid, shall be obtained from the school board. So, that's bringing of the use, saying, hey, we're going to, we need to list these as surplus items, we want to auction these off, we will set the time and date and all that stuff, and then we go through that process. And then, we collect sealed bids, people come look at the vehicles, and they put their amount down on what they want to do. So, so that's typically the process with, when it comes to sealed bids with surplus equipment. Of course, you know, you do have to state if you're an employee of the school system and all that. But it does have a couple other sentences on down. If reasonable attempts through the bidding or direct sale process to dispose of items are unsuccessful, then the superintendent is authorized to arrange for disposal. So, what is disposal? So, you know, is that selling them for scrap? Is that getting rid of them in some other manner? And what is that manner? And so, looking also, when it comes to the obsolete educational equipment such as hardware and different things, it says that, yes, you can give that away. You can also give that away to students, you can give that away to 500 seat organizations. And so, really, I just wanted to talk to the board about what your thoughts may be. We know right now the transmission is not, it's not going anywhere. And if there's a way to partner with somebody, if the board is willing to do something like that, because now our students get hands-on practice of removing a transmission, putting a transmission back in a vehicle and going through that. But he's still in conversation with them about that.
I was gonna say, are we in on that one? Not sure yet.
No, not sure yet. That was just a conversation that he's had. So, you know, he's trying to find ways that we can also use it for practice with our students.
Yeah, I like the idea that, because that's really taking them in making up instructional materials, which is great. So, it sounds like he has one particular organization that he's kind of talking with now. What were your thoughts if we were to end up donating these? Did you say that we would give it to a C3, or we would give it directly to a family? Or would that...
So, we have over 100 or around 100 McKinney-Vento students, and that's, they're homeless students. And so, the thought would be that if we have, and not all families would maybe need a vehicle or something, but if we've identified a family that, hey, this will help them get a job, this will help them provide for their children, this will help the family get to school, and so we're, you know, then we would look to work with that group and say, okay, we've identified a family, and this is, this is where it would go.
You've not really had that specific conversation yet?
We have, no, no. Aaron's still in the conversations, yeah. Aaron still is having conversations with them, but...
Have we had that happen, where we put these out to bid and we don't get any bids?
I think most of the time, they were traded in or spread.
Because of the car market, though, right now, there's no way that these would not get bid on. Just to give you an idea, the 2003 Suburban is going for $8,000 to $10,000 to $11,000 with over 200,000 miles on them. So, the 2005 Taco, again, selling online for $7,000, $8,000. Obviously, we would get less than that for these, unless we're gonna detail them and shine them up. But even if we got the trade-in value, we've got, what, five vehicles here, each one, trade-in value, you're always gonna get more than trade-in value when you auction things off. You're looking at $15,000. And meanwhile, right before this meeting, we're sitting over there having to cut window shades from the new LSK renovation to save $5,000, because we're that tight on money right now. I love the idea of charity, but this is government, this isn't charity.
And we would go through our processes first, so we would put them out for bid first. Yeah, we would go through that before we got to that step. That's, that's like last step on the, on the road. So, you have, we have to go through according to policy, we have to first go through this process here of putting them out for bid and all of that, before we would even move anything on day-to-day.
Value could be affected by them cannibalizing parts off some of this stuff, too.
None of these have been parted.
Huh?
None of these have been parted.
These haven't been parted out?
None of these have been parted.
Okay.
No. I am curious to know how they're, how they're parting out other vehicles, though, because if we're replacing the vehicle, a fleet vehicle, you've got a newer vehicle, and then we're taking the 2003 for parts, that doesn't, that doesn't compute. You can't, there's no...
You know, if they would have had some of these other vehicles that just died, and instead of doing, then there may be some other 2003 or 2005 vehicles that have been parted out that were being used for this.
Is there a reason why our need is so randomized, though? Because I totally get that, I'm not a mechanic as a husband, but we could do more of that parting out if we stayed in the same vehicle instead of having a GMC here, a Chevy Taco here, a Chevrolet there, like, since they're not interchangeable.
So, and I agree with you, but one of the things that Warren County has done is that they don't purchase, Warren County Public Schools, we did not purchase or have not purchased new vehicles. So, everything that is purchased, so these vehicles right here, when they were purchased, were used. So, that's why your years are going to be a little different. That's why you may have some different models, just because they were used and they were trying to find the same thing. Now, of course, our special education vans that we just purchased, those are both, those are all brand new, and they're all the same model, they're all the same stuff. So, those, that is different. But most of our other vehicles, except for the force buses, they're, they're purchased as used vehicles. Off of our, off of the lot over there.
So, we'll depart, that's with the option?
I mean, I like the idea of just seeing where it goes, right?
Yeah, we would have to follow that step first.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, when would these go up for auction?
So, we'd have to work through some things. We have some other things. I know that Mr. Smith was talking to Mr. Live Say about there's some things that he's going through right now that maybe they need a surplus as well. So, we're just gathering some things that, at one of our future board meetings, that we will have a list... that we will have a list of surplus items that we will say, okay, hey, we need to go ahead and move these things out. And so, it's nothing right now, but...
Now, once these vehicles are sold, if they are auctioned off and they're sold, and there's X amount of money, we have to say where that money goes?
So, you know, my recommendation would be that it stays in the Transportation Department.
I see.
But yes, you guys could awfully say where it goes. That would be the correcting, sir, to your question, sir.
To refresh my memory, how much is a new bus?
Huh?
How much is a new bus?
Oh, it's about $125, $130, somewhere around there. Is that correct?
Work our way, work our way towards part of the bus.
It might buy a few chairs.
Couple wheels, maybe.
Close to missing like a bidding night, like...
It could purchase maybe the camera system for it.
Yeah, that's true.
Of course, right now is the time to buy his cars, though.
I see. It's a great time to sell his cars.
Sell them, yes. Just to sell them. His car's not bad.
All right. So, it sounds like you guys are going to work through some stuff on that. So, all right, that sounds perfect. Thanks for bringing that up. Next, we're going to move on to Facilities Child Nutrition Transportation Report. Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd just like to provide a brief update on some, just some projects, some activities, those type of things going on with child nutrition and facilities and transportation. With child nutrition, first off, Ms. Kenzie would like for us to know that we're fully staffed at this time. So, in our environment of everyone trying to find help, we're fully staffed, so we're very thankful. We're currently running our No Cost to Family CEP breakfast and lunch programs at all of our nine schools plus Diversified Minds that we have since the, since the start of the year and that we as, or you as a board decided to do that. So, that's been very helpful. We recently added a small program called Child and Adult Care Food Programs, which is a federal program that provides reimbursement snacks to eligible children who are attending after-school activities. AS Rhodes has a Disc Golf Program, which is eligible. E. Wilson Morrison has an Early Act Club that is eligible. And Skyline High School has an after-school program at Diversified Minds that qualifies for the snack programs as well. As far as marketing, Ms. Kenzie would like to share that our marketing program has been updated in all the schools. We repainted several needed areas in our elementary and middle schools around our cafeterias. We have replaced several milk coolers this summer and are still waiting for the delivery of one to Resy Jeffries. Maintenance will soon be replacing the refrigeration evaporator and condensers at Resy Jeffries with grant money that we received. Our serving line at Skyline Middle School was reworked and is now much more efficient for the services for students. We also have our electronic menu boards functioning at all secondary schools. The students have been very vocal about our new hot breakfast programs at the middle and high schools. We have, and they're, they're loving it. We have added several built-to-order breakfast items, which have been extremely positive for our breakfast participation. Since we're also incorporating a second chance grab-and-go breakfast at our secondary schools, we have seen more than double the participation at our middle schools and high schools. Continue to have very high participation for this program. There is a partnership that our food service has developed with Fort Valley Farm in Sperryville to provide some local apples to our kitchens during the school year, and that program seems to be doing well. Food Service, they are planning their annual Thanksgiving feast at each school now. Those will be held at the elementary schools on November 17th and also sometime that same week for the secondary locations. For Facilities, Mr. Levesey, we'd like to report that we have replaced our plumber, the position for a plumber. That we also have a new hire for our grounds at Warren County High School, and that person is scheduled to start on the 26th of this month. We had a vacancy, we had a retirement in our general maintenance, and we have able to hire for that position as well, and that person will start on October the 3rd. We have one vacancy left in the department, and that is an HVAC vacant position. Some of the projects that are going on, we have our Blue Ridge Tech Roof Project, which is going well. We're fortunate that the rain is the thing that pulls us off the roof. When, but we've been fortunate in the last couple of weeks to have not as much rain as we previously did in those previous couple of weeks. And the rubber membrane on the roof is down, and the metal capping, which will go around the corner, that project should conclude itself, Mr. Levesey said, around October the 7th. Or it could be sooner, as long as the weather still cooperates. Earlier this evening, we met as a building committee and discussed the Leslie Fox Kaiser renovations and that we are continuing or have worked through the value engineering items. We have looked at identifying additional funding sources for that project. At our next meeting, our October, our early October meeting, we will bring back a contract that our attorney has reviewed and so forth to our group and do a presentation in regards to that project. And one thing I want to add that's not down here is that we, looks like we have finished the fencing around the playground area and those type of things at E. Wilson Morrison Elementary School. So, that project was short some material, and that material was, I guess you could say, on back order. And so, that material's in, and they've finished the fencing. So, please draw by there. It looks really nice. Looks really nice. In transportation, all of our drivers have completed their bus evacuation drills as is required. The route adjustments for overloading have been completed. The next few weeks, we'll be working to review the efficiencies and safety of these routes. The new bus production that we ordered, our new buses, continues to look like it's a late January to get our new buses that we ordered. It's a bit of a lag time there, but a lead time. On the 26th of this month, the Transportation Department is having a just-for-fun bowling night for its staff. And Mr. Mitchell would like to say thanks to Royal Lanes for generously accommodating our folks for that event. We have two different proposals for school bus radio solutions and are in the process of getting a third. The IT Department has been helping greatly with this to assure we're making the best use of the available technologies. And that Mr. Mitchell is also looking and reviewing at some different routing software options to assure that we're getting the most functions and services for our staff, students, and parents. And so, that's my brief update on those three areas, and if you have some questions that I'd be happy to entertain.
Questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next up, we have an instructional update from Ms. Bragg.
For the instructional update, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the science learning communities that we have happening at our elementary and middle schools, and a little bit about Warren County Middle School and some of the things they're doing to adapt to the internet outage there, and also a little bit about where we are with our beginning-of-the-year testing. So, for the science learning communities, our elementary group met on September 8th, and that was a group of 4th and 5th grade teachers that came together to start the work on their topic, which is about big ideas and cross-curricular connections to be able to have science as a focus, not just during science time, but also incorporating it into reading, math, and other areas of their instruction. So, that group of teachers started to explore examples of how to best integrate units and best practices associated with that, and talked about how that would start to look in their day-to-day classrooms. And they also began to identify what units they will be working on in science and those central ideas in those units that can be incorporated into, like, the reading and the math instruction going forward into the second quarter. So, they will meet again on October 17th. So, it is a monthly meeting that that group comes together. The middle school professional learning community, they met on September 7th at Skyline Middle School and had both participants from Skyline and Warren County Middle School teachers in attendance. They began with a discussion about best practices and what that looks like in the science classroom, sharing their successes from the start of the year, and also sharing any struggles that they had in order to get support from the group as to how to maybe address those if those things come up again in their classrooms. So, it's a very open and honest discussion at the middle school as they look to support one another. They will meet again also at the beginning of October to start to collaborate on incorporating the 5E model of instruction into their science classrooms. The 5E model speaks to exploring science and engaging students with science. It also matches with how the STEM Scopes curriculum, which is their online textbook, comes into play. And so, they will be focused on that for their October meeting. So, we're excited about these opportunities for our teachers in science as we know that that's an instructional focus for this school year. As you know, Warren County Middle School has been without internet going into its second week, and we just wanted to highlight how, once again, our teachers are adapting to the challenge that they face with that internet being down, and some of the creative lessons and experiences that they've created for their students at Warren County Middle. For example, in Mrs. Ritchie's 8th grade English class, the students were creating stories and performing skits that focused on the story elements and types of conflict that are found in literature. And in Mrs. Russ's 7th grade science classrooms, students were actively engaged in hands-on experiments about osmosis using gummy bears. So, just want to give a shout out to Warren County Middle School for the adaptations that they've made. It is a big change, the same age when you go to not having internet access for your classrooms. So, they've done a great job with that. Lastly, on testing, the required student growth assessments from VDOE for grades 3 through 8, reading and math racked up on September 16th. And again, Warren County High School graciously hosted Warren County Middle School students so that they could complete their testing, given the internet outage at Warren County Middle. The students' results on those assessments are being shared with teachers, and administrators are holding data meetings with grade level and those subject-level teachers. The student reports from the growth assessments will be uploaded into Power School and available for parent access next week. And lastly, the VDOE will release the school quality profile reports for all divisions tomorrow. That's all I have on fiber report. Are there any questions?
Was there an update on the internet at Warren County Middle School? Is it still in the...
So, we will have, the fiber will be delivered on tomorrow morning, and they will begin construction on replacing that fiber. And they should be up by the afternoon and/or at the latest on Friday.
That wasn't true. We were giving more important for each other to do in there.
Sure, absolutely.
Any questions for Ms. Bragg? Thank you, Ms. Bragg. Thank you. Discussion on class sizes and student numbers. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll just see if Heather, Bug, and James, if you guys want to come up and just kind of discuss things. I did want to, so I gave you two handouts. We did find out now, at the last regular meeting, I reported that we had 5,055 students. There was one school that had duplicated some numbers, and so that knocked that back down to 5,042. So, I did want to make sure that you were aware of that, that we do have 5,042. Now, that does not include pre-K, so that is only K through 12. So, if you want to add pre-K, you need to add about 173 to 175 students to that camp. So, that would put you as a, as a division around 52 to 100 total in the division, including pre-K. So, when we look at our class size, and here, I'll share this with you guys, sorry. We gave the board their topic, but you guys have it.
Thank you.
I'll let you guys share it. So, I want to look at the elementary and look at our class size, and you can see that we've broken that down by school, by grade, gives the number of students and number of teachers for an average class size. And there's a couple that we wanted to look at. So, let's look at Resy Jeffries. And I wanted to highlight 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. Those numbers are, and as you see the numbers behind Resy, or kindergarten through 1st, you can see, Resy's is growing. Resy's is going to be needing five teachers per grade level within the next year to two years. As these numbers continue to grow, we're going to have to add staff. We currently have four teachers in 3rd, 4th, and 5th, but those numbers, you can see, kind of are not in alignment with all of the other schools. You can see that comparing to 3rd, 4th, and 5th at LFK, at E. Wilson Morrison, AS Rhodes, and Hilda J., those numbers are a little higher. One of the things that we wanted to consider as we look at our numbers, we're still coming back from deficits from the pandemic, and so, we're still working on math remediation, reading remediation. There's a lot of things that we're doing that we need to really make sure those class sizes are as small as they can be, or that we're able to get support in there to help support staff. So, right now, when we look at that, and we know that at Resy's, we're going to need, really, within the next year, two years, five 3rd grade teachers, five 4th, and five 5th. But, right now, it's not, it's not a good time to bring in a new teacher because now you would be splitting out of class. They've already been established with somebody. So, what we were thinking is that, and we've kind of had that conversation with our budget group about needing this size. So, we've talked as a budget committee and looking at this. And then, I had another conversation with Cabinet, and they were saying, okay, instead of, instead of splitting that class out now or at Christmas, because now they've been with a teacher for an established time, should we look at instructional assistants to come in to support those three classes? And really utilize some of our lag pay or some of our teacher turnover savings that we would have to help fund these positions for, to make sure that those students and those teachers have those supports. And I think if we look at our instructional assistance right now, Mr. Goodman, we have a little better time hiring instructional assistants than we would elementary teachers at this point in time.
We would. I would have more applicants for those positions, yes.
And so, just wanting to try to find a way to get support for these three classes or grade levels, because you can see there's four classes in each grade level. We're trying to get some support there. Now, we could also do something if we could find somebody with a bachelor's, if that's what you guys are wanting to do. So, I want to point out to E. Wilson Morrison, when you see their 5th grade there, it looks like they have 26, but that is a person with a bachelor's. So, we hired them as a coach. So, they're going through a program with us to become a certified teacher. Now, when the school had already started, so those groups were already together. So, when that person came on board, we didn't split those classes up. So, what we're doing there is that person that is going to, that is working on their teaching certification, that has a bachelor's degree, they're actually the one doing the small groups to pull out. small groups to pull out and various things within that grade band to help support those other three classroom teachers. And I don't know if you, anything else you want to share there as far as what's happening? Heather?
I mean, I think you pretty well covered it. I think that what Mrs. Rudess still has shared is that instead of, you know, breaking those classes perhaps into some smaller groups and then giving a person that has the bachelor's degree but doesn't have the teaching experience, even student teaching experience, a class on their own, you know, might not have been the best scenario. So they're leaving the students with a certified teacher, and then that person is helping to, like Dr. Ballinger said, push in, run small groups, and do support for all three classrooms, even though they're a little bit larger. It's probably servicing the students best as being with a certified teacher and then having that person that's going through a program providing that support until they are certified and have those opportunities for teaching experiences and things like that.
So when will his certification take place?
By November. There's a process that we have for career switching and also for transcript evaluation where the Virginia Department of Education, so that's where the person is in the process at right now, so we'll know then.
So what are we going to do with that person when he gets his license?
So we're probably going to keep.
Create a new class?
We'll probably keep it in that same model possibly, just because it's, if you're halfway through the year and you're breaking students out, busy disrupting friends and groups of friends, and, you know, they established an identity or community within that classroom. And so we really don't want to disrupt too much, so it may still be that we keep the same model, but now you have a certified teacher that is doing that push-in and small group and various things. So kind of just wanted to throw this out to you guys to see what your thoughts were as far as looking at Resy's. And when we look at third, fourth, and fifth grade, you know, we are pushing the limits when it comes to number of students per class. You get a couple more students in each of those classes, and it really doesn't align with the rest of our schools. And plus, when you think about that, we're still having to do a lot of remediation, and we want our students to be successful. And if you remember, going back to the SOLs, yes, we have a lot of growth, but that pass rate is something we still want to work on. And so we want to make sure that we're giving our students the best services possible, and this is one way that we wanted to look at attacking that. And I know as a budget committee, we talked about three teachers. And then as, when I talked to my cabinet, they talked about, hey, wouldn't it be best instead of disrupting, do three instructional assistants? So just kind of throwing this out to have a discussion, that's what this is about, it's a work session to discuss kind of what we feel might be the best solution for Resy's right now moving forward.
Going back to the E.W. Morrison, next, and thinking forward till next year, if this person we're working with now could be an extra teacher for that school building next year, right?
No, because there's supposed to be four at Eagleson, and if you notice at Eagleson right now, it shows three in fourth grade, but they have a fourth grade vacancy. So we hired somebody.
Okay.
And then they, I think they resigned within.
They determined, actually, they're still working there, but it was their own choice from a commitment level, an excellent person, that we continually want to work through that process. I mean, it's an excellent employee who decided that was right for them. So we worked for them, and we worked with them, super qualified, doing an exceptional job, but that's what's best for that person, yeah.
And so we have a fourth grade vacancy, so you would have four teachers at Eagleson. And you have to remember, Eagleson is one of those, it's accredited with conditions. So we want to make sure we're throwing the resources at Eagleson. And also, when you look at our schools that are, if we were to go back to the free and reduced model or the CEP model, that would be Eagleson-Morrison, that would be Resy's. And is there another elementary school?
Yeah, there's like a total of four or five, four of those schools. Eagleson, Resy.
And then Skyline Middle.
Skyline Middle, Skyline High.
And Skyline High. But when you look at the elementaries, what we're looking at right now, Eagleson and Resy's are, you know, they have the population of our students that need a little more assistance, that we need to look at and to help and to focus on as far as need-based.
I assume the plan would be instructional assistants to finish out the school year and then try to budget for those three additional teachers for next year for Resy?
Well, and that was one of the things, I know, in the budget, we talked about trying to get teachers, but the likelihood, as Mr. Goodman stated, of hiring elementary teachers probably would not.
Right, and I understand for next year, the plan would be.
Yeah. So, but for right now, what we would like to do is use lag pay or teacher turnover to go ahead and hire three instructional assistants to go ahead and get them going at Resy's to see if that's, if that gives us some support, well, that will give us some support there that we need in that grade band.
Dr. Ballinger, if I could add too, Buck has been helpful to me in his, you know, past as a human resources director, making connections with universities. There's a number of schools with December graduates that we also continue to talk to, and he has helped me partner with some of those schools who have affirmed. I won't say which ones in case any of our counties around us are also searching.
Tuning in.
However, that's something that we are hopeful about in terms of December graduates. Most of those folks finish up at the end of November, and so we are looking to those partners to hopefully provide us with. That fourth grade position at Eagleson-Morrison's been posted for some time, so hopefully we'll find some folks to do that. But it is, we have local candidates for our instructional assistance jobs on a regular basis. They're recruited by folks we meet just on a daily basis. Our administrators and our teachers know people, neighbors, others, you know people. Even our board of supervisors has sent me candidates this year to help fill positions, so I'm grateful for that, and we continue to fill those. There aren't as many people out there right now for elementary. That's been a challenging spot to fill. Sorry about that. Thank you.
So if we were to add three instructional assistants for the remainder of this year, have you thought about what their role would look like going into next year? And what they would, how would they be utilized next year?
So a lot of times what we have is we will have some turnover in some instructional assistance positions. And so what we try to do is if they've been with us, then we go ahead and keep them and move them into a different capacity. So it may be that this year they're at Resy's with third grade, but hey, we had a vacancy, and now that we've hired that teacher, we have a vacancy over at Hilda, we will offer you that position over at Hilda and do a transfer. So we do a lot of that towards the end of the year to make sure that we keep those on staff that want to be on staff. Otherwise, you know, those positions just would not be built into the budget going into next year unless we actually saw there was a need, because we see the need for the elementary positions.
That's kind of my question, like if you're going into next year, if you have the three teaching positions and you still have these three instructional positions, how would you allocate them?
Yeah. We just would not put them in the budget unless there was a need for that this year. But we will have, we would have, yes ma'am, yes ma'am, we would have turnover, and that's what we do a lot of times, you know, when we've had this situation like this, is that we have turnover in the instructional assistance positions, and so we just offer those positions.
And the document, sorry, the document would be, I'm sorry. The document they signed would actually be for this year only, so, sorry about that.
What about, you know, sometimes you can get some, you know, December graduates if it were, I'm just throwing this out. Have you ever looked at like a co-teaching model just to finish out that year? If you got, if you were able to get three teachers just for, you know, the halftime and do a co-teaching?
That would be ideal.
You know?
That would be kind of like the model that we have at, what they're doing at Eagleson.
With the coach.
With, yeah, with the, yes. So if we could do that, that would be great. We would do, use that.
Because you wouldn't have to move the kids necessarily out of those classrooms when those friends have already been available.
But there's a different cost also between instructional assistant and a teacher, so...
But I also wonder about, I mean, hiring an additional teacher and bringing those class sizes down feels a lot different than hiring an instructional assistant to help with 95 students. Like how impactful is an instructional assistant going to be with that many students?
So how that team works with that instructional assistant, it can be very impactful. We have a lot of instructional assistants that, they are great educators, and even though they don't hold the bachelor's and they don't hold the teaching certificate, they are some of our best educators. So they can be very impactful with those students in small group settings, supporting those teachers by pushing in or pulling out. So it'll have a big impact.
I don't doubt that our IAs are helpful. It just seems like a lot of students.
Yeah, and one of the things that we, and you're right, as far as when you're looking at three, we were saying, okay, one for third grade, one for fourth grade, one for fifth grade. But then that grade band, you have four classes, so that means I'm.
Right.
I'm working with, I'm working with two classes, and that's scheduling. So it may be that these two classes, I'm pushing in for reading in the morning, and math is when they do the, they do reading and math in the morning. But then I'm going to push over here with this, these other two classes in the afternoon because they're doing reading and math at that point in time. So it all comes to scheduling and finding out when they need to be pushed in with those classes.
But don't they all have lunch and specials and stuff at the same time?
They do, but their schedules may also vary a little bit. You can modify that schedule a little bit. They all may be on the same schedule, but if we, whatever support we give them, I know that Ms. Helmig will do what she needs to do to best put that person in a position to be very impactful within our classrooms.
Well, I would rather do that in before than not do anything. But yeah, that was just my question.
I mean, if you guys want, I mean, we could throw out a couple of instructional assistants and maybe one teaching position if that's what you feel that we could do, but I mean, I don't know how long, I think we'll fill those instructional assistants, but it may be a while before we fill that teaching position.
Yeah.
I just, I don't feel confident this year in getting that elementary position filled.
Get four elementary positions, right, with the fourth grader and the fifth grader.
Yeah. And then, of course, next year we will look. So if you look at, so for instance, you look at Hilda at first grade, you've got four teachers there, their class size is 16. We could possibly look at moving that, one of those teachers, you can't do it now.
Right.
But next year, we could move that teacher to Resy's, you know, as they move into the third grade or second grade, that number's going to go down from 21 to 16. So looking at numbers, and we do evaluate that, but when we started school, we thought our numbers were going to be up there around 17, 18 students, and now we're down to 16 in that one particular class. So we would evaluate those current classes with low numbers and maybe even transfer some of those teachers from one school to the next.
How do we split up the class sizes? Where it says average class size, does that mean, are we trying to keep all the class sizes the exact same?
We do that, that's the bar bill, to make sure that we keep them.
Well, the reason I ask is that training that I've been doing, they had a kind of clever idea of when you have a brand-new teacher coming in, give her the smaller class size, so instead of keeping it at like a flat 20 across the board, maybe give her, you know, 18, and give the other senior teacher the 22, and then offer a yearly bonus of, say, $1,000 to $2,000 per extra student that the experienced teacher is willing to take on for that one year as a bonus for our student. And they were saying that in some of the areas where they've tried this out, it actually keeps these first-year teachers from getting overwhelmed and quitting, so, because it breaks them in the year, so.
Is the classroom management aspect of which is impactful?
Yeah.
And that's a good idea, and that's one of the reasons that I'm looking at those that are sitting there at 24, 25, because some of our people that are coming in, and we know on average, if you're still in education after five years, you're going to stay in education. But that five-year window is when people leave education. And so keeping them and keeping those class sizes manageable, and also what is best for our students and what's going to help us become a successful school system. We all know that smaller class sizes do help, and, but I like that idea, and that's something that we can definitely look at. Thank you for sharing that. So what, do we want to look at those three instructional assistants, or do we want to say, okay, do we want to look at four instructional assistants in that area? You have four classes, but that just gives you two and two. You know, you would have one that could slope between whichever grade, but I think that one per grade band would be, you know, let's start, let's start with that and see where we're at.
That sounds like a good idea. At least do the three and then what is that for?
Okay, so at, what we will do then, if you guys are okay with it, because you, you can't approve it now because it's a work session, we will have to bring this to you at the next meeting, but I will have Shane go ahead and post anticipated positions. And then at the next meeting, that way he can go ahead and kind of start the process of, you know, maybe getting some applications in and things like that. But then at the next October 5th meeting, I believe, then we would actually have you vote on this to go ahead and get those positions because, and utilize those funds that we discussed to pay for those.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Next item is change to eligibility criteria for the Warren County Educational Foundation and Thompson Scholarships, Ms. Brown.
What I'm passing out to you is page 17 of our Program of Studies, which is where the Warren County Educational Foundation and Thompson Scholarship's eligibility is listed. Sorry, I didn't attach it to the board item agenda, but some of the information I included in the explanation summary that's on the agenda. So we're recommending that for the awarding of the Warren County Educational Foundation Scholarship and the Thompson Scholarship, that the requirement that one scholarship goes to a male and one scholarship to a female student at each of our high schools with the highest academic GPA and who also meet the additional scholarship criteria, that that gender requirement be removed. What we have found and have experienced in the past is if your top two academic performing students are both girls, that second student cannot receive the scholarship, and it has to skip them and go to the third academic performing student who is a boy. So what they've done in the past at our high schools, working with the counselors and administrators and knowing that the scholarship monies that are available out there, they have tried to make up for that person that got skipped, an equivalent amount as to what the top academic achieving male and female student got. But just by removing the requirement that one be a guy and one be a girl, it's kind of focusing it back on those with the highest academic GPA regardless of their gender. So that was the proposal in the discussion item.
Because right now, there's not a separate scholarship that's valedictorian.
We don't have valedictorians and salutatorians, yeah. So it's just, you know, the way this scholarship has been awarded historically has been to the highest performing GPA for a girl and for a guy. And, you know, if the top five are guys, then you're giving it to the one and six, and you're skipping all the middle because of that gender requirement.
What did, what do you originally say these scholarships intend, their money to go to? Did they request it to be split up that way?
I only became aware of the attached letter in the item agenda a little bit earlier this week when Mrs. Lowe sent me an email about it. And in that particular letter, there is. And in that particular letter, there is no requirement for it to be gender-specific at all. It does speak to it not being athletic, that it's an academic scholarship. You know, it does talk about to needy students who are attending a two- and four-year college, university, or technical and professional school. But there isn't a gender discussion in that particular letter. I, from what I understand, Warren County Educational Foundation has stepped in to fill that fourth scholarship that we need. So, three of them have come from the Thompson Scholarship Fund, and then that fourth scholarship has been provided from Warren County Educational Foundation. I am not aware of any sort of documentation where Warren County Educational Foundation laid out any requirements. I'm not, I'm not aware of anything.
And I think how that all came about, because that's the one that Ms. Tullers actually delivers at Warren County High School. I think she delivers one there each year, and because the two Thompsons are at Skyline High School, and then at Warren County High School, you give one Thompson and one Warren County Educational Foundation. And so, I think that there, because of those three scholarships, the foundation just said, okay, we'll pick up, and I think it's maybe the male that they, is it the male that they give?
It's currently listed as the top.
The male, okay. So, they give that male, just to make it even at both schools of male, female, male, female. But when you look at this and you're skipping students, yeah, that's, that's, I don't think is, is something that we should be doing. We need to recognize students for, one, what we need to be recognizing them for, and it can be disheartening on some that they are being skipped, and as Heather gave the example of, you know, if I was number two, but because I'm a male and the next female is number five, you know, that's-
And I think it should be noted, and, you know, I don't know the history of how it has evolved, but these two scholarships are delivered at graduation. They are kind of the, you know, pinnacle, if you will, of the scholarships, of the many, many generous scholarships that the county gives out. You know, these two are awarded at graduation. I, you know, I think they are kind of presented as the cream of the crop, sort of, you know, top-performing students. And if you skip people, then it's really not that anymore.
And they are the only two that we give out at graduation?
Yes.
Kind of in the middle of that one.
Sort of, yeah. And again, I don't know the history, I don't know if these were around when we were still doing valedictorians, but certainly, it would kind of supersede that now, yeah.
Is there anybody at these foundations or groups that are giving the money that we should, you think we should check with about those?
I can certainly, you know, reach out to the bank. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't know, being new to this position and new to overseeing our scholarship, you know, process. I mean, I can certainly reach out and try to, try to find where that contact is, but also, you know, I don't, I don't know, like, who to call right now, but I can certainly try.
I mean, it makes a lot of sense to me to remove that gender requirement. I just, you know, thinking about someone gave this money to us, and I would want to try to, you know, abide by their wishes too.
Sure, I can certainly try and find that information of who we would need to contact.
And I have a good contact.
Okay.
So, we're just going to see, like-
Yeah, and just, you know, just, again, since this is a work session item, just kind of see what your guidance is, kind of which direction you want us to go. And so, what I'm hearing is that if we reach out and, you know, we're okay with this, then the board is okay with doing away with the gender-specific and just doing the top two, is that, is that what I'm hearing? Because we'll need to present this at the next meeting.
My preference would be personally, that it would be the top one to students.
Yeah, so just the giver is not stipulated, then the top two sounds to me-
Because if you look at, the only stipulation, you know, they had, they just say needy. And when you look at needy, with the cost of college nowadays-
They're all needy.
Yeah, it's, it's-
So, they say needy?
There was not.
Okay.
Just said, just said needy.
It doesn't say, like, seven, eleven, or whatever.
Yeah, there's nothing related to like a financial-
Or a faculty or anything like that, just the students.
So, you make the presentation at the next meeting, and we can make the motion for this?
Yes, that would be at the next motion, yes, or at the next meeting, yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Brack.
Thank you.
And then we had our last item that we added on this evening, Dr. Ballinger's, and maybe Mr. Valentine.
Yep, Mr. Valentine, our added item. And so, this is just to discuss, you know, looking at the increased demands on our finance department and actually needing to enlarge that by one position. You know, we have looked at this, and Rob and I have talked a couple of times on some different things. And so, what we've looked at was, you know, this is, this stays in the category, so this would be admin and health, right, Rob? It's an administration category. But we looked at, because when we went into this, we had a budget for our previous assistant superintendent, which was on the top of the scale, and then when we hired our current assistant superintendent, there's that gap. And so, looking at half a year, can we utilize that gap to go ahead and get this person in place to assist us as, you know, if we can get them hired? And looking at getting them in place, so that as we start our budget season, it helps us in working through. So, I don't want to steal all your thunder, Rob, so I'll just let you kind of discuss about it and what you kind of looked at. And I did tell Rob, you know, I'd let him look at what category we would be on, if that would be a specialist scale, if that would be an admin one scale, what their job description would be, because really, truly, he knows what the department needs, what finance needs. And so, I'm going to rely on Rob to really kind of put that descriptor together and kind of tell us what his needs are within his department.
And I haven't had a chance to put that together yet. I've got a rather large report that's due next Friday, and I've been looking at that. So, what I can say is, the position that I gave up quite a few years ago was an administrative assistant position, and certainly, that would help at this point, anything would help, I guess, at this point.
So, I know this was a very last-minute addition, and so, obviously, you weren't really prepared to present to us, but I also think it's important that we at least start having the discussion at the work session, so that way, if you do have the information for our October meeting, it could come up as an action item to maybe get that job opening posted, or maybe even for the October work session, however that works out for you, but at least the discussion has started a little bit this evening, and we all know that that's what's going to be needed.
And I think we need to look more on the, and I know Rob's saying that maybe an administrative assistant, but I was thinking more on the lines of a financial analyst, or maybe even a, you know, somebody that even had a deputy finance, or something that can really get in there and support and do the things, because this job is becoming a little more demanding.
Yeah, I think we saw that this year with this budget situation, and we're going to be starting a new budget here in a couple of months, so, yeah, I think we need to roll and get on-
How you best support, how to best support you? Let us know what you need.
So, I think, were you able to look to see what that gap might have been?
The savings?
Yeah.
Yes, I calculated it, just over fifty-three thousand, fifty-three thousand and three dollars. That would be the salary savings for, plus benefit savings between the retired employee we budgeted for, and then the employee that's filling the position.
And so, we both felt pretty confident that we could, you know, depending, it doesn't matter which scale we go off of, the admin one or the specialist scale, we both felt confident that we would be able to get somebody for the rest of the year that would be able to stay within that threshold.
And would the intention be to keep this person out in the future?
Yes, then we would add it into the budget.
Just have a budget for it next year?
Yes, we would just have to add, yes, yes ma'am.
Okay. Any additional discussion on that this evening?
But the plan would be to try to have this for the October fifth meeting, for you guys to vote on that.
Absolutely.
So, that, now, if you guys are fine with that, and I know Rob, Rob's got to worry about this big report that he's been working on, but, you know, if we kind of nail down some things, we could actually do an anticipated for this position as well, if you guys are fine to kind of get that ball rolling. But I know we would have to create that job descriptor and all that stuff, to work through that, to just kind of get us moving on.
I think that sounds good. I think if we do all that in October, it'd be good, along with the positions.
Yeah, get Shane to help you.
Create more work for Rob, while I help him on the work.
I know. Well, he knows what he needs, so I just wanted you to tell me what he needs and what the department needs, so that's where we need to go.
Yeah, I'm leaning towards above an assistant, just somebody with a little bit more experience to jump in.
Yeah, some of the financial.
Yeah.
Eventually, he will want to retire eventually. Not anytime soon, but, you know, eventually.
Good. Good you haven't thought about it.
Okay, so, we will have this at the next meeting, as I will have it taken down there for you at that point in time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ballinger.
Okay, that ends our work session items for this evening. Can I ask someone to read us in?
This motion is made that this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. The school board desires to discuss the following matters in closed meeting, Section 2.2-3711A1, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of employees of the school board, specifically, the superintendent's evaluation and contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Grant, can you do one more?
Mrs. Lowe.
Aye.
Dr. Pence.
Aye.
Mr. Rinaldi.
Aye.
Mrs. Sammons.
Aye.
Dr. Block.
Aye.